All those meeting the Board of Trustees to order, please stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as the Honorable Ed King gives our invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. All right. Mr. Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mr. Christie, here. Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. McCray?
Here, former president. Next, we'd like to get a approval of the agenda. I know that was pointed out to me by Treasurer Kavanaugh that there should have been a person, Jaclyn Harper should have been added to the alternate list for MERS. We can move that down to news number seven if there's a problem. If not, we can just make that adjustment at this point. If there's any objections to making adjustments at this point?
No.
Okay. So now I'm looking for approval of the agenda with the adjustment.
To the Chair.
Treasurer, I mean trustee, Taylor.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Do you have some comments? We have one this evening. This is Michael Van Tol.
Thank you so much Supervisor McCray and thank you Redford Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Van Tol, Legislative Aid to Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker-McCormick. Wayne County Commissioner McCormick is calling for an open agenda item at the next Redford Union School Board Meeting, hopefully on August the 12th, to address the multiple issues regarding the Olympia Street Project. The Commissioner has received numerous calls, even though she was not serving as Commissioner at the time and had no prior knowledge of the project. She does not believe there was ever an open discussion for residents and the Commissioner is hoping that this open forum will provide for a public discussion of the project and she understands why the public is upset. It is her hope that residents will have an opportunity for open communication and that alternatives can be offered as a result of this open conversation. The Commissioner can be reached at 313-224-0884 if you need to contact her. Commissioner McCormick is also hoping for a mural to be commissioned in cooperation with the Detroit Institute of Arts in Redford and hopefully if approved, it will bring local art into our community. And finally, applications are now being accepted for the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. They are open to Wayne County teenagers, ages, grades 10 through 12, to become part of the incoming class of the Commission. If you're interested in and know of a teenager in Wayne County that would benefit from this leadership program, call this number 313-224-0884. Again, my name is Michael Van Tol. Thank you so much, Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Director Bonnerak, presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, Honorable Board. While I thought all the members of my management team were going to be into me tonight, one of them is here. If you have not met her before, this is Rita Cheedy, my Senior Accountant. That was part of the reorg that you approved in February and she has been working out just fantastic in that role ever since then and it's made a big difference in the way our day-to-day operations are going. Our Chief Accountant Jaclyn Harper was not able to be here tonight and I was hoping that I would be able to formally introduce our new Communications Specialist and my Marketing Admin, Jennifer Miracle-Best, but she had an opportunity to hear Governor Whitmer speak tonight, so I told her she should probably go do that. But she also has been a tremendous addition in the couple of months that she's been here and I know that she's met with a couple of you already, but I do plan for her to meet with each of you to talk more about what we can do to promote positive marketing and communication for the township. Other than that, tonight officially, the only thing I'm here to do is present the first quarter budget update as part of the Uniform Budget Act. That is something I'm required to do on a quarterly basis and that is the one-page, I guess technically two-page spreadsheet that I passed out to all of you just before the meeting began. As you may recall from past presentations, because we are an accrual-based budget and because of the nature of the way that things come in, our budgets are often running a good, you know, 45 to 60 days behind where you might expect them to be. So even though we're more than 25% of the way through the year, that we have not necessarily posted 25% of our expenses or our income yet either. So that is completely normal and that's why when I present this first quarter budget for all of you each year, I usually show you what the budget is for the year, what the activity has been for the first quarter to date and what the activity was last year for the first quarter. I think that's a better comparable to look at how are we doing this year versus the year prior. I highlighted a couple that I thought might generate some questions, but other than that, and I'll talk about those, I don't really have any concerns about the budget. The first one being property taxes. You may notice that at this point it's showing zero for property taxes and that's really simply because the settlement from Wayne County that we receive in May has not yet been posted and obviously was posted last year, so that number will change. So we have received that it just hasn't been formally posted yet. And the other one is that on state revenues at the moment, it's showing a negative number and that's because we received money in April that is actually for the prior fiscal year, so that's been moved back as part of the audit and the next funds coming in haven't yet been posted yet. Again, that's kind of part of that whole, we're 45 to 60 days behind based on the way things come in. So that's completely normal. We're not actually at negative 14% in that column. On the appropriation side, I just wanted to highlight, because you might wonder, well, why is general government only at 4%? Most of those items are large ticket items that come in in big chunks. For example, our annual insurance policy is almost half of that number, so the fact that there's only 4% activity right now is very normal. And the PEG funds, Public Education and Government, is showing a little higher than normal because there are a couple of journal entries that need to be posted that will adjust that. On the other page, I highlighted in particular the Central Dispatch SAD, FIRE and the FIRE SAD and I really probably should have also highlighted the Police SAD on the page prior. Just to remind that because, starting with this fiscal year, we have moved the SAD to its own fund and this is the first quarter that we're moving those things around, we're still doing some cleanup to make sure that everything is posting correctly. So in the end, you know, within this budget, the SAD will actually show zero and so there are some numbers that have to be moved around and that's why they're showing expenses there when there was no budget for them here, because the budget for those is in the SAD fund, not the general fund. Other than that, there's nothing that I have any concerns about with the first quarter review of the budget unless there are questions from any of you.
Mike, did a copy.
I left one at your desk. Mr. Dennis is going to bring you one.
I wrote on the copy. Sorry, you can have it back. I was taking notes. Thank you.
The other thing that I passed out just briefly, you may have wondered, why did I give you guys a copy of a canceled check? This was a fraud attempt that tried to come through three times and I just wanted to say kudos to Kathy Anderson in the AP Department and the Treasurers Office Team, because this is another example of how clever thieves are getting with their attempts to steal money. So in this instance, what this person did is those numbers at the bottom of that check are our bank account and routing numbers and that amount of money was an amount from a warrant list of bills. So they pulled a warrant list of bills, they found somehow our account routing numbers, which is a thing to do, and then they tried to write a personal check to pay for their mortgage and they tried to do it three times. And the only reason this got stopped is that one of the things that we implemented a year, maybe a year and a half ago now, is in addition to any check that presents to clear, does it have to match the check number and the amount? It also has to match the name to the letter. So we've actually had a couple of things that like someone went to clear and like, for example, if they present, if it was made out to Patricia Kennedy and you signed it as Patty Kennedy, that would reject. Because it's that specific now, that's what caught this, was the fact that we implemented that additional level of security. So I just thought you might find that of note and that's why I presented it for you this evening.
To the Chair.
Here you came, ma'am.
Just a quick comment. Kudos to your department, because this is not the only time that things have been caught and in conjunction with my department also, but kudos to your finance department, absolutely.
Thank you. I don't understand this, that he made the check out to himself. You know, to Arnaldo Venezuela Acosta?
He did. He was trying to make it out to cash, right? But like that check number that's on there is a check number from our warrant list.
Who's trying to?
Yeah.
He wrote a check to himself, but he tried to draw on our?
Our account. Yep. Sneaky, very sneaky.
So really, it was the printing down here that put us in danger?
Yes.
Threat.
To the Chair.
Mr. Jackson.
Director Bonnerak, have you noticed the signature on this check? It's not a signature.
No, it's not. It's just a, right.
So you would think that the bank would have initially rejected that check.
Banks are interesting institutions nowadays.
Yep. To the Chair.
Mr. Christie, Kennedy.
Has he been caught?
That I don't know. You know, like this, because it says he's in Tucson, Arizona, but I don't have any reason to believe he actually is in Tucson, Arizona, right? So I don't know. Oh, actually, I do know, because on the second one, it says that they tried to deposit it in ATM in St. Paul, Minnesota. So I don't know, right?
He's all over the map.
Right, so all over the map.
Other questions from the Board?
All right, well, thank you. That is, I think, enough for me, because she'll hear from you later this evening.
Yes, worth it, quite a bit. Thank you. Consent agenda items, Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as amended. Minutes of the regular meeting of July 9th of 2024. Minutes of the special meeting of July 16th of 2024. Minutes of the study session meeting July 16th of 2024. The warrant list of bills as of July 19th of 2024 in the total amount of $4,63,011.81. The annual MERS conference, October 10th through the 11th of 2024, selected management delegate Barbara Handy, Jaclyn Harper as alternate this year, and employee delegate Gerard Pryor, alternate Kyle Watts.
Support.
Supported. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Moving on to new business, Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, on all board. The first item tonight is a bid recommendation for the Water Department for our Water Service Line Investigation and Verification. We went out to bid for this project and we did receive seven sealed bids from contractors that had a wire range from $320,000 to almost a million dollars. And we have had, we're working with Benish and Benish went through everything as well with ourselves and we did receive a bid that we went through, did references, and the bid did come considerably less than what we are anticipating, which is good for us. And we are recommending the award of this project be awarded to Amerivac LLC in Jackson, Michigan in the amount of $320,800,000. One of the bonuses about this bid then, it allows us to be able to investigate and verify additional properties. And the grant that this Board approved from Eagle back earlier this year is called the TMF Grant, the Technical Managerial Financial Grant, that is only for the verification, investigation of material service lines. So this is going to allow us to do even more than we thought. We proposed to do about 400, respecting since we did have a significant savings on this, that we'll be doing even more. So that's a big bonus for us. So again, we are asking that the Board please approve the bid from Amerivac in Jackson, Michigan.
Man.
Sorry.
Long drive.
In amount of $320,800,000.
$800,000.
Yep.
Questions from the Board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, just a quick question. You say this is just for investigation and verification?
Only, yes.
If it at the bottom, it says funding is for the replacement of miscellaneous improvements. What does that mean?
I just took a copy and paste and didn't correct myself.
So there is no replacement? It's strictly?
Funding for the investigation and investigation and verification of the miscellaneous improvement.
So we can cross out replacement of miscellaneous with investigation and, all right, brilliant. Thank you.
This wasn't easy one to read or to do, but I, of all the other stuff we have.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
Nope.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, do you know how many additional, an estimate of how many additional homes you'll be able to investigate since this bid came in so long?
I am hoping that if we looked at it, we can maybe do about an additional 100 houses. So it probably depends on what they get into on some of these, because there's some concrete restoration, things of that nature, depending where the stop box is at. So I would anticipate we can get up to 500 on this. Just depends on how, the areas, things of that nature, could be 50 just based on what they find, but we can do, we can do more, which is, which is great. Yep. All free money on this one.
Other questions from the Board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the bid recommendations DPS Water Department Water Service Line Investigation and Verification Project to be awarded to Amerivac in Jackson, Michigan for $9203 in the amount of $320,800 to be paid from the Fund 592 Water and Sewer.
Support.
Supported by Jackson. The motion is to approve, approval of the bid recommendation DPS Water Department's Water Service Line Investigation and Verification Project to be awarded to Amerivac, Jackson, Michigan for $9203 in the amount of $320,800 to be paid from Fund 592 Water and Sewer. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call goes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes. Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, on all board. In front of you is a memo requesting approval for the capital improvement project known as the Central Combined Sewer Overflow, CSO, retention base, NRTB and collector's sewer, which be located on the site of the Roosevelt School there. As this Board knows, we've been working on this together for two to 18 years, you know, depending on who we think is on this project. We've been working on it very diligently in the last two years and then it ramped up last year when we were awarded funding from the state of Michigan in amount of $54 million, 34 from a loan, a bond, and then 20 million from a principal forgiveness. We were granted that in April this year of some additional funds of $10,800,000 for a total of 54 million, or excuse me, $65 million. We went out to bid and know we had to do some bonding and the bids after we came back and went out in May, as we discussed at last week's meeting, the bids came in, the lowest submitted bid was from Commercial Contracting Corporation in the amount of $100,324,000, Commercial Contracting Corporation in Auburn Hills. We had a second bidder from Clark and Rick, Clark Construction, Rickman Construction. They did a joint venture of Auburn Hills and they were $105,821,100. We did some multiple outreach to contractors during this process, two different outreach between general contractors and subcontractors. Great turnout at both events. We had one in April and another one in June and we had at least six general contractors there and a keen amount of subcontractors that do the sewer work. Kept going through the process with Eagle. Designs were changing due to Eagle input for permitting, things of that nature. County also with the road restoration that will be taking place when the sewers are installed, because a part of the process also involves a replacement of close to three and a half miles of sewer lines. You have to for the outfalls, the six outfalls that surround basically from Bell Creek Park coming around both sides of Western Country Club and then up again on Ross Drive coming around the far east side and come along Graham Street and then go across and then they reach out to Roosevelt Park going up the side street. That's where the facility will be located at and then at that point, the water's just like it is at the North CSO at Glenders and the water's treated when there is a major storm event and slowly discharge once it's cleaned back into the river, which will then have a discharge pipe going through Western Golf Course. Just discharges the clean water. As you know, we've met a couple of times with project plans. We did, we approved one in '22 and then we had to do an amendment this year, February of 2023, due to the change of the scope of the project. Past that, our bids have come in significantly higher. Myself, Director Bonnerak, Supervisor McCray, Waitrim have had meetings. We have reached out to the state. As of today, we did send out another letter regarding financing to increase our financing by about another 50, just under $52 million to get additional bond financing at their rates at 2% interest over 30 years. I don't hope you brought up, but we cannot exceed 30 years of the SRF program and their rates are at 2%, which again is exceedingly a lot lower than what we currently get on the market. If you do have any questions regarding the project, though, I do have Steve Kalbowski and John Ari from Waitrim behind us. Steve's been part of the project since day one. John is a special advisor to the project. He's a project advisor, senior advisor, and he is here. Kelly McRobb-Ackland, who you've seen many times with Waitrim, is actually on vacation this week. She actually tried to cancel our vacation because of this, but they said, no, Kelly couldn't have a week off. So John and Steve are here to answer any questions you may have also about the project. So that's where we currently stand on this. If all goes through, we project to, and once we get the financing taken care of, we projected this to start in probably January of 2025, so we can do some work regarding both on the golf course to take care of. They have, Western Golf Course is holding the Michigan amateur there in 2026 and we want to get it done so it gets two cycles of grow season. We have to bore underneath one hole, we shouldn't have minimal, and we have to do an open cut on the 13th hole, which is 10 feet wide by about 10 feet deep and it gets filled in and then it's just, you know, work with them to get the grounds back to the normal that they have, the very normal seeds for the golf course. Other than, everything's on the outside in the right of way. Wayne County has been an integral part of this. Waitrim, Steve and Mark Freeback also needs a lot of this. Tom has been involved, myself and Tom have had a meeting every Tuesday with Waitrim for almost a year at 10 AM on Tuesdays. So it's been a lot of hard work. You've been part of this as well, Adam. And so we are, if there's any questions, we are looking to, once we go through this, approval for Commercial Contracting Corporation out of Auburn Hills in the amount of $100,324,000.
Questions from the Board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, with this bid, I know that we had kind of underestimated what the cost of this job was going to run because of our timetable, right? The eight months versus 18 months to get everything together.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any risk of the contractor coming back? Is this a fixed amount? Can, is it 10% over, 10% under? Do we foresee any other changes or requirements from Eagle once we approve this bid that will affect this contract with this company?
Last Monday, Waitrim held a three-hour meeting with both contractors and there's a lot of paperwork they went through, interviews with both companies. I think the Clark Construction was in the morning and I think they met with Commercial Contract in the afternoon. I would expect, obviously, there could be some change order. We do have that in the budget at 6% for the state, so we do have contingencies within this project. They did a lot of work, as we stated, in eight months, it usually takes 18 months. Eagle did a lot of changes, we kept going through. They did two change orders, I think, within 24 hours of the bid being due, because they kept getting stuff from the state. State just kept taking their time. Their thresholds, as we have stated, their milestones are just so hard to meet right now, because they're on a very strict schedule due to their financing for the fourth quarter. quarter. Is there, could be some change? Absolutely could there, yes. But it's currently built into it right now. I don't think, and if Steve and Steve is especially if you want to go up to, if I could just ask him if he is facing further, I was not part of those, but there was this. You know, could there be any other changes? And we have, we have most of our permits. There's a couple that we're still waiting on, but Steve, if you just want to briefly add into it if you could.
No, I mean, that's accurate. On any construction project, there's risks or unforeseen things that can come up, but the state allows up to 6% of that loan amount of the, 6% of the construction contract as a contingency fund that they'll allow funding for. And so that has proven to be, to work on most projects unless you have a real catastrophe. Even though we had a short period of time for the design, we did mobilize a big team of people to look at the various aspects of the job and to make sure we had it covered to the extent possible, you know, within the plans and specifications. So we're comfortable with the design plans as they've been prepared. As Mike noted, there are still some permits outstanding that we, that we need to obtain. We've put in applications for those permits. There may be some things, but we worked with the permit agencies during the course of the design to make sure that we understood what they were looking for and they understood what we were providing within our design documents. So that goes a long way to minimizing change from that end of it.
I guess what I, and I know we have a project going now, Rick Wallace and their contingencies were built into, some contingencies were built into the price. Is the 6% built into this $100 million or is there that additional?
It's added on top of that.
So this is, this must plus 6%?
6.6% or $6.6 million. It's actually $6,595,300 to be exact. But Mr. Supervisor, just the, the total amount that we're asking for later with the 117 million does include that 6% contingency. So it's not 117 plus since that includes all of it. Yes.
All right. Other questions from the board?
To the chair?
Trustee Jackson.
You mentioned catastrophic event. Is it possible or is it currently in place, any kind of insurance to cover a catastrophic event?
Well, yes, well, the contract, contract includes insurance, you know, of the contractor for, to cover any items that are, you know, that they, they're at fault for. So there's some, you know, certain insurance policies in place within the construction contract to handle any unforeseen problem that comes up related to that. You know, the contractors work. Do we have, if, are you asking, do we, Waitrim?
I'm just asking if there is insurance in place?
Yeah.
In the event of a catastrophic event?
Yes.
Yes.
For what they're doing, yes. If it's contractor's fault, absolutely. Yes. I mean, I don't know how, how we describe, describe a catastrophic event. So it just depends what it is, but all the contractors are fully insured. That was mandated by the state.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? All I can say is this, this was a very unexpected thing to happen and the plan was to be a whole lot less money that we're going to have to deal with. I will say that we did have a meeting with our state senator and both of our state reps and representative from our congresswoman and they're working with us to find if there's anywhere there's more grant money or money available that we may be able to apply to this or if there's a way to extend and get a very low interest rate loan on this. So there's, while this is going on, they've been working and we met with them like three days after we got this news because it's important that we try to keep this under control best that we can if there's any funds out there we want to bring them in. So, but we have to do the project. I mean, that's unfortunately where it's at. Wish we had a lot more money come with the project, but that's not always how it happens. So other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair?
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the bid recommendation DPS Water Department Central CSO Basin and Collector Sewer Project to be awarded to Commercial Contracting Corporation, Auburn Hills, Michigan for 8326 in the amount of $100,324,000 to be paid from the CSO Central Basin Fund.
Support.
Supported by Treasure Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approval, for the approval of the bid recommendation DPS Water Department Central CSO Basin and Collector Sewer Project to be awarded to Commercial Contracting Corporation, Auburn Hills, Michigan for 8326 in the amount of $100,324,000 to be paid from the CSO Central Basin Fund. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, in front of you is a memo. Resolution rights, sorry. Thank you. I actually passed out a copy of the resolution. The state would like a separate resolution included that I found out late midday Thursday. So there was just a template sent out to you. I was not here to be able to get it checked up before it went out, but I at least wanted to share the template. Did write it this morning. And so this is a resolution per this, per the state's request, tentatively awarding a construction contract for wastewater sewer improvements, basically stating that this board has, that you firmly adopted, it was February 2nd, 2024, which is when you approved the amended project plan. We came in '22, we were denied and then we applied again in 2023 and we were awarded. This is the amount that was, that was approved for commercial contracting. That Waitrim has recommended awarding the contract to a little bidder and it was attached with your earlier approval that we are tentatively awarding the contract to Commercial Contracting Corporation contingent upon successful financial arrangements with Eagle CWSRL program. And therefore, the board today is approving said resolution on July 23rd, 2024.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair?
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the resolution that will tentatively award a construction contract for the wastewater improvements regarding the construction of the Central CSO Basin and Sewer Collector Project.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Jackson. Motion is approval of the attached resolution that will tentatively award a construction contract for wastewater system improvements regarding the construction of the Central CSO Basin and Sewer Collection Collector Project. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Director Dennis.
Thank you. Just stuff out. Also, the next item here is part of the process for the state is we also had to solicit for the professional services, they call it the construction engineering investigation, excuse me, construction engineering inspection. And for the state, we called it a QBS. And so part of it, we did receive three quotes from local companies. One company I didn't bring up that I had never heard before, their address wasn't even in their, our queue that I could find. So we had a meeting with Waitrim last week regarding the state's requirements. And after going through the whole process, the amount, we got their, their quote for this, your three-year period for, again, for the construction engineering inspection, also acting as our owner's representative assistance during the entire project. That will be from the three-year contract construction as well as up to one year of facility testing, anywhere from probably, I've been told, eight to 12 months to get the facility online per state risks. After we went through everything per the state, it was our recommendation that a contractor awarded to Waitrim the amount of $9,597,580, which includes the multiple working tasks, staffing plan, project schedules detailed throughout the construction, operational startup phases. Also, funding for this project will also be allocated from Fund 592, 592, excuse me. And if you have any questions?
Questions from the board? Hearing no questions, what's the question, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair?
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of a contract to be awarded to Waitrim Associates Incorporated, Taylor, Michigan for 8180 in the amount of $9,597,580, which includes multiple working tasks, staffing plan, project schedule as detailed throughout the construction and operational startup phases of the Central CSO Basin and Collector Sewer Project to be paid from the CSO Central Basin Fund.
Support.
The move is supported. Motion is approval of the contract to be awarded to Waitrim Associates Incorporated, Taylor, Michigan for 8180, the amount of $9,597,580, which includes multiple working tasks, staffing plan, project schedule is detailed throughout the construction and operational startup phases of the Central CSO Basin and Collector Sewer Project to be paid for from the CSO Central Basin Fund. Are there any other questions? Discussion, roll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Carry. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Thank you, Waitrim. I just got to say it's probably the most money we've allocated, we spent at one meeting ever. And it's not unhappy things, it's a must thing. So we'll continue to work to find ways to save during the project and we'll keep the board and the community updated as we do so. All right. Director Botterick.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So that brings us to item five, which is the last piece of this puzzle for now. So all of the items that you just approved in items two, three, and four together add up to the total amount that we're seeking through a bond authorizing resolution to go to the market to obtain these bonds. As Supervisor McCray just said, I believe this will be the largest bond offering we've ever gone to the market for. With that in mind, we do have our bond counsel, Pat McGow from Miller Canfield here tonight and also one of our financial advisors, Stephen Haydock from Benzenski and Sons. I think Mr. McGow is probably the best person to talk about the resolution if he wouldn't mind going to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. As has already been stated, this really is the financing piece to generate the funds to pay the cost of this project. And as Mike Dennis indicated in his lead-in, originally, the number was expected to be $55 million, then we got funding for $65 million. And when the bids came in, the total project cost, which is the construction bid plus the engineering, plus the administrative costs, plus the 6% contingency totals approximately Now, as of right now, the state has committed to provide funding through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund in an amount of $65,100,000. That was the number that they had committed to back in February. And of that $65.1 million, 20 million of it is what they call principal forgiveness. So that means that even though the note or the bond is going to say $65.1 million, as soon as you draw it, they forgive 20 million. It's like a grant. So that is what they've committed to, to date. As has already been stated, there have been several calls and meetings over the last couple of weeks to try to increase the amount of the funding and they are working on that and we would expect that that information would be available in the next two to three weeks. And that's because the timing of this is, you know, the state has 60 communities that are in this fourth quarter pool of water and sewer projects. So you were one of those 60 communities. So the deadlines are very rigid, the milestones that they, they have on when certain things need to happen. This was obviously a surprise and so they are trying to figure out how much additional funding they have to be able to offer that to the township, either in the form of additional funding through the low-interest loan program, which is 2% in 30 years, possibly principal forgiveness. And if they don't have additional funding, then the township would need to go out into the bond market to borrow money for that cost overrun. So what we have here tonight is really the resolution for the borrowing through the state revolving fund. Now, the good news is that the state program provides for a low-interest loan of 2% for the 30 years. And the way that works is that you draw that down as you incur expenses. So you don't pay, you don't get all the money upfront, but you also don't pay any interest until you draw it down. And it's going to take several years to draw down that money for the construction project. And also, if you don't use it all, then you don't draw it and you don't have to pay that back. So that does provide some flexibility. What we did for the resolution tonight, because of the deadlines and the fact that you've already had to submit applications and they're going to be finalized in these numbers, we have asked the township to approve the bond in the amount of $117,130,000, which is the total amount of the project. That way, if they do provide loan funding for you for the full amount, this covers it. If they provide something less than that, then this will allow us to still proceed in the program and then figure out where the additional funding will come from. And you've already mentioned possibly some other sources in addition to an open market bond, maybe there's federal grant funds or something that state or federal legislators can assist with. So this is really here designed tonight to give us the authorization to participate in the program up to the full amount that they might offer us, which we won't know for sure for a few weeks. If approved by you tonight, that allows us to go forward with the program. They will finalize that loan amount by August 17th, probably before that. We might know as, as early as the next week or so. But it's, the state will issue an order confirming the amount of the loan and the forgiveness when they finalize it for their program on August 16th. And then the township would sign a purchase contract confirming that loan amount August 19th. And then the closing on this part of the financing will be September 6th. So everything's kind of moving here in the next several weeks to finalize the number. I will say that if it turns out that they don't provide funding at this time for the full $117 million, we actually have time to wait until we do the additional funding for whatever that extra amount is. You know, we've talked a lot about, you know, whether we need approval now or later. But again, because there's a 6% contingency, lots of things can happen during the construction, we don't really know what the full amount is going to be. And so we might instead wait until we get further into the project if they don't provide the full funding before coming back to the board to ask for any kind of additional funding. So really what this does is it authorizes the bond or the loan from the state up to $117,130,000 with the understanding that if they provide less than that number, we might need to come back at some point in the next couple of years before the project is complete for whatever would be needed to finish the project and the funding. So that's essentially what this does. Again, as has already been said, as the supervisor indicated, this is something that we were being ordered to do. being ordered to do by the state. So they have issued an order as part of the discharge permit, and I know the board is aware of that. So this is something that you have to do as a township to do this project in order to address this issue with the CSO basin. But that also means that you have the ability to issue the bonds for that. This is set up to be what's called a limited tax general obligation of the township, which is similar to the other types of bonds where you've done, where the township is essentially promising the state, we will pay you back with whatever funds we have available, including levying taxes to pay it. Now, this is expected to be paid back from your sewer system revenues. And I know that you've talked about that over the last couple of years with the rate structure for that. The reason it's pledging the limited tax full faith and credit of the township is that allows the township to use its existing credit rating, which is an investment grade rating, to satisfy the state's requirements for participating in the program. So I just wanted to say that even though it says it's payable and pledges the township's taxes, it's expected this is going to be paid from sewer customer rates, not from taxes or from the general fund. So, but that was done to give you the lowest possible financing and flexibility for participating in the state's program. This resolution is the last action item for the board to allow us to move forward with the program, and then it authorizes various township officials to sign the documentation, which would also include approving the final loan amount once the state provides that to us. That would be the supervisor, treasurer, clerk, and finance director who are authorized to take the necessary actions to finalize the loan paperwork. So with that, I'll stop talking and answer any questions you may have about the resolution or the financing for the project.
Mr. McGow, Mr. McGow, I guess I would have talked, made sure I'm clear. So if we're going to get that kind, we're asking for that money, and we get a lot of money coming in, we're not having, we're locked into it, and we're not paying a penalty if we don't want to use all that money, that we get money from somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay. So my next question is if we get super lucky, and we get down to 30 million, are we going to still get the 20 million forgiven? Or we have to spend a certain amount in order to get that 20 million forgiven?
So Mike said more conversation. I think the answer is, if you say super lucky, like you're going to get, the assumption is that the state has already said, you're going to get 65 million in loan, which includes 20 million of forgiveness. It will not be less than that. But if you think you're going to get money from somewhere else for the other 40 million, that would be great. If you didn't need to borrow the full 65, they would probably reduce the 20 million forgiveness if you're not borrowing the full 65. But, you know, right now, that is expected to be received. I think the discussions that we've had, the additional funding is probably not going to be principal forgiveness. If anything, it would be increasing the loan amount at the 2% rate, which is still a much better rate than you would get if you had to go borrow that in the bond market.
Mr. Chair. Director Kavanaugh.
Just a quick question. If, let's say that we get the 117 approval, from start to finish, how long is that going to take for the bonding process?
So the bonding process is going to be completed by September.
Okay.
So that, but to address the supervisor's question, you know, if, there's two different ways that this bond amount can be reduced. The first is if in the next two to three weeks, they come back and say, we're only going to give you, let's say, $80 million, including 20 forgiveness. The bond documents may say the loan is 80 million, of which 20 is going to be forgiven. So that's one way that that number gets reduced, is between now and the actual order being issued by Eagle with the closing. But if after the closing, after September, as you go through the construction process, you don't need to draw down the full bond, you will not have to pay back that amount. So when you close out the loan, meaning after the two to, what is it, two to three year construction project?
Three years.
The state will then look and see, how much did you draw? If it's less than the full loan amount, they apply the forgiveness and reduce the amount and adjust the schedule. So you still have time to find ways to cut costs or provide additional funding, and at that point, the loan number is really the maximum amount you can draw. But if you come up with savings along the way, then you wouldn't have to borrow the full amount or pay that back.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
To the Chair. So just in layman's terms, for simplification, as a business owner, so it would be similar to just having an open-ended business loan. It's there for your need if you need it, but if you, obviously, if you don't use the money, there's nothing to pay back.
Yeah, I think that's similar, similar to a line of credit or a draw.
Yeah, okay.
You only pay on what you draw out.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing other questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move for approval of the bond authorizing resolution for $117,130,000, limited tax general obligation bonds, Series 2024 Clean Water State Revolving Fund bonds for the CSO Central Treatment Retention Basin CWSRF project.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Motion on the floor is the approval of the bonding authorization resolution for $117,130,000, limited tax general obligation bonds, Series 2024 Clean Water State Revolving Fund bonds for the CSO Central Treatment Retention Basin CWSRF project. Any other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Just a quick question, Adam. When we draw down, does that go directly to the invoice that we need to draw from or to pay? Or does it, does the funds come into the township and then go out as a, are we a conduit? Or does the payment go directly to that invoice?
Will be a conduit. So I, the way the drawdowns usually work is that we will have to submit certified payments, applications that we've paid these expenses, and a requesting that reimbursement.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing on roll call vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Question carries. Thank you, Pat.
Director Bonnerack.
Thank you. The last item on your agenda this evening is the approval of the employment agreement to promote Timothy Young to become the new senior housing manager for Minock Meadows. As many of you know, our longtime senior housing manager, Rob Roach, is retiring at the end of this month. And a little over a year ago, the staff over there began the process of talking about, who are we going to find to replace Rob? And so the position of the maintenance supervisor was created really with the intent that that person would hopefully be the person to be promoted. And so, you know, Tim Young was hired last year, and everybody has just raved about how wonderful he has been in that role. And Director Mancini would like to promote him to be the senior housing manager. She is on her family vacation this evening, which is why I am presenting this on her behalf. Mr. Young is here this evening, if he would like to ask any questions.
I think you might have to introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, board. My name is Tim Young. I see a lot of familiar faces. It is with some condolences, though, that Rob is not here this evening, his brother is in the hospital. So he does send condolences that he could not make it here. I know that he has enjoyed his almost 24 years with Minock Meadows, so it's going to be a huge hole to fill, and his presence will certainly be missed. It is definitely, is as much a part of Minock Meadows as Minock Meadows is a part of him. So I definitely am really looking forward to the opportunity to continue serving this community and the people at Minock Meadows. So if you have any questions, I'm definitely here to answer them.
Questions from the board? Treasurer Kavanaugh.
You have been doing very well.
Thank you.
So I've been told, because you go into our department, but you're here for 24 years as well, correct?
That's the intent.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Other questions from the board?
Just for Adam.
Just for Adam? Go ahead, Adams. Don't go in all right. Go ahead.
Adam, if you can answer this question, it might be more of an HR. Do we know what grade in step that Rob is currently at as a 24-year employee in that position?
Yes, Rob is at, I believe, grade three, step 12, which would be the top of the scale.
Okay.
Which would make sense for how long he's been here.
And the recommendation for step six, which is like already halfway there?
Yeah, just based on our history for how we have handled other internal promotions like that, where we've moved them one grade, which is what we're doing, we've moved them a flat step to step, because that means that a flat 10% increase for the additional duties.
Okay, so currently, the position that Tim currently holds?
Is grade two, step six.
So it's a jump in grade?
Correct.
Same step? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the employment agreement to promote Timothy Young into the senior housing manager position at Minock Meadows Senior Housing Complex at the annual compensation rate of a grade three, step six.
Support.
Supported by trustee Kennedy. Motion is the approval of the employment agreement to promote Timothy Young into the senior housing management position at Minock Meadows Senior Housing Complex at the annual compensation rate at grade three, step six. Other questions from the board? Hearing on roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Welcome to board. Thank you. I'm sure you do a great job. Thank you.
All right, announcements from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Christie.
You know, we have an August 6th primary election scheduled, but you can actually start voting as early as July 27th. Vote early, and that's what I'm encouraging everyone to do, particularly because we have some precincts, precincts that have been relocated because of remodeling done to the schools. And those people, they don't have to come and vote early, they do have the option of going to vote for one time at a different location. And I'm going to call on my deputy to come up and let those people know where they can, if they refuse to come in and vote early, and they want to, you know, be kind of like a road trip or something, you know, try to find their location, we mailed out a map to them, but I'll ask my, Gary and Bert, my deputy to fill voters in on where their one-time voting location is.
Thank you. So we sent out some postcards this week, actually, and they looked something, this is kind of a mock-up, something like this, and on the backs is a temporary location for the polling place, and it also has a map on there as well. So it shows all of the streets, you can't really get lost going to your new location. And so if you're at Jefferson or Vandenberg, you will be at Adams Elementary School. If you're at Hilbert, you've been moved to Our Lady of Loretto. And then if you are at either World Peace Outreach, Pierce, or Fisher, you've been moved to Thurston High School. The deadline also, just a couple of housekeeping things, deadline to be a write-in candidate is this Friday, the 26th. So if you choose to be a write-in candidate, the deadline is Friday. And then while you cannot go to the Secretary of State and register to vote on time for the election, if you do come into the clerk's office, you can register to vote and be able to vote and get a ballot for the August 6 election. As Clerk Christie already said, early voting starts on the 27th and ends on the 4th, 8:30 to 4:30 here in the boardroom. Thank you.
To the Chair.
That's all? Okay. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Well, no, actually, this is for the clerk.
Oh, okay.
Is there a map of all the precincts, the current precincts?
We, yes, it's on, it's on the bulletin board out there, but for this election, that map's not going to apply because we have, the school's doing remodeling. So for this election only, we've sent out the postcards with the maps showing where the temporary locations will be.
Right, but do you have an overall map where it tells us where the temporary?
Well, no, no. Not with the temporary ones, we, that would...
Because they're only temporary.
That would cost more money than just to send out a small postage than to create a big map with the new, because it's not really new, it's temporary. So we wouldn't create a whole bunch of these long maps if it's only for August. It won't be for November.
How about a list of precincts, only because some of us need to know?
Yeah.
Where the precincts are, maybe a list of precincts?
I do have a list. We can post the list and have that, have that out. My intent is also to have on the LED screen at DPS Building and here that have these, these changes for people to know. So in the, you know, when you walk into DPS, there's the big TV screen, and then we have the TV screen here. My intent is for voters to always be aware of what's going on, so that should be on there this week.
Okay. So we just reach out to you and say we need a list of the temporary precincts, but all together?
Yes. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other announcements?
I only have a couple of things to say. For those of you that know Dwayne Gregg, who was police officer in this community and serves us to this day, his mother passed away this past week, so if you see Dwayne, please make sure you offer your condolences. This is the last meeting before election, so I want to thank everybody who signed up to run for election, to do their duties. I encourage everybody to go out and vote, and vote for people that you think will serve the community at all levels well. And please go out and vote, because this is a chance for your voice to be heard. And other than that, I don't have anything else. I know we have some music out there to go listen to, and I don't know if the food truck's still serving or not, but trustee Taylor's saying yes. So if there's nothing else before this board, this meeting is adjourned.[1757.51][1757.51][applause]